Well, welcome back, everyone. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. President Pro Tem Tyson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lon Senior Cody.
Let us pray. Oh, good and merciful God, the members of Columbus City Council have gathered to consider the issues that face all of us as citizens of our great city. As the summer begins to wane and the weather begins to change to autumn, we're reminded that life goes on, that time passes, and the needs of our city and its citizens call for new ways to address persistent problems. On this day after the celebration of the 15th anniversary of 9/11 and the terrorist attack on our country, we ask you, God, to give your guidance to us and to our leaders so that we can seek the way of peace, abandon hatreds, and work together for the common good of all, not only in our nation but throughout this world, which is your gift to us. We also are with our Muslim brothers and sisters as they celebrate Eid al-Adha, the Feast of Sacrifice, tomorrow, September 13th. May the three great monotheistic religions, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, come to a new understanding of their common roots in the covenant of God with our Father and Faith Abraham. And may this realization promise us, prompt us, to work together in a way that will cooperate with what your will for all of us is, that is, that we live together in harmony and in peace. Help us to look beyond our differences to those things that unite us. And most of all, God Eternal, may we be open to you, receive happily and willingly your grace and favor, and begin to see all humans as our brothers and sisters. Amen.
The first order of business actually is to adjourn Regular Meeting Number 42, which we left open in July. So can I have a motion to adjourn Regular Meeting Number 42? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And we'll now convene Regular Meeting Number 44. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Clerk, how about communications received by you? I know they're listed in the city bulletin and will be published there, and they're also on the agenda. Are there any other communications you read in the record?
No, sir.
How about resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Council President, I have no resolution, but I would at least like to acknowledge and welcome to our first Public Safety Committee meeting and City Council meeting of Director Ned Pettis, who is our new safety director. He started August 1st as his first day and also was our prior fire chief for over 10 years. Chief, would you like to say, or Director, I must say, would you like to have him say a few words?
Council President Klein, Councilmember Brown, members of council, it is a pleasure, an honor, and a privilege to be back, and I look forward to working with you to help move Columbus forward. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening, I bring Resolution 0203X-2016 to support the Central Ohio Transit Authority's 2016 tax levy. And as I read the resolution, I'm going to invite Coda Chair Gene Carter Ryan to come up. And so, this resolution says, "Whereas 10 years ago, voters supported the Central Ohio Transit Authority's request for a .25 percent sales tax to meet the transportation needs of our residents by expanding its services; and whereas Coda has expanded services by 80 percent to provide Central Ohioans with greater access to education, jobs, and medical services; and whereas Coda has increased ridership to over 19 million passengers in both 2014 and 2015, providing 68 local express or cross-town lines; and whereas, in an effort to improve existing services, Coda is applying new technologies such as real-time tracking to increase convenience and reliability; and whereas, Coda has also worked with community leaders to increase economic opportunities throughout Franklin County; and whereas, the Columbus City Council believes it is in the best interest of Columbus residents to renew the sales tax to fund the operational needs of the Central Ohio Transit Authority and to continue the services that are essential to the quality of life and economic prosperity of our community." So be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Columbus, that we formally endorse the renewal of the Coda levy and support Coda's work to expand services in Central Ohio. Just, we certainly are supportive of Coda's good work. This tax levy is something that will continue to move our city forward, and we appreciate being a partner with Coda.
Are there any question or comments from my colleagues?
If not, Mr. Chair Gene Carter Ryan, would you like to make some remarks?
Just, we really appreciate the strong partnership that Coda has had with the City of Columbus over the years. It's been 10 years since we've asked for this renewal. It's not a tax increase, it's just a basic renewal, .25 percent. Since that time, we've increased, again, our service by 80 percent. As you mentioned, 19 million rides, very significant. We've undertaken a significant number of important projects that have really helped our riders. The riders are what we're all about, riders staff. And again, some of our new services, Air Connect, the C-Max, C-Bus, they all have tremendous impact on the City of Columbus. So we need that renewal in order to continue to provide services, really for those, and our riders, people with disabilities, the elderly that use also our mainstream program. We have very strong financial stewardship, and I think we're asking, again, for the voters to support us in September, I mean, in November. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all you do, and we will be out there and be partners as we build transportation for moving our city forward. And certainly, again, encourage folks to support this levy for this renewal. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I wasn't following instructions.
Thank you, President Klein. I do have one resolution this evening, and I'd like to ask Ms. Terry Lee Sin, any of her guests, to come down to the podium. I have a Resolution 0208X-2016 to honor and recognize Terry S. Lee Sin on her inspiring achievements and to congratulate her on her retirement from the City of Columbus. Whereas Terry, an Assistant Director for the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, has been a dedicated employee of the City of Columbus for 24 years, overseeing projects that have significantly impacted the City of Columbus. Terry has supported her community by volunteering for Red, White, and Boom for 19 years, and we've seen you out there working very hard, and thank you, and has been a member of the Employee Volunteer Recognition Committee within Recreation and Parks. Whereas Terry has decided to now move on to the Tom Finacy, Mike Harden Back-to-School Project, an initiative that she created in 1998. Her goal is to distribute 10,000 backpacks filled with school supplies to needy children every year. And whereas, on behalf of the citizens of Columbus, we commend Terry for her hard work, commitment, and service. On September 16th, 2016, she will retire after having served as a role model for her coworkers, family, and friends. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby congratulate Terry Lee Sin on her years of contributions to making the City of Columbus the best place to live, work, and raise a family. There are no questions or comments, I would like to move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement. I'd like to now have you speak.
Thank you. I've always said that there's no greater honor than serving the public. It is truly the most noble of all professions. You have a chance to make a difference in people's lives, and our citizens expect us to do just that. So while I will no longer be doing public service in the realm of government, I fully intend to continue serving the public whenever possible. It has been a privilege and a pleasure, working for and with all of you, and I thank you for this special recognition. Absolutely.
I believe Director Collins had some brief comments as well. Uh-oh.
Councilmember Page, President Klein, members of council, thank you so much for this recognition of Ms. Lee. She's absolutely been an incredible asset to our department over the years. She's committed her time, effort, and passion towards serving the public and serving the citizens of Columbus. She's been a great partner for me since I've been on board, and I just appreciate everything that she's done and thank her as well and congratulate her on her retirement.
And I would like to add one thing. I'm going to miss your beautiful jackets. They always brighten up our days, so if you just stop by, make sure you have one on. And congratulations again.
I will do that. Thank you.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I have a couple of resolutions. At this time, I'd like to invite the President and CEO of the Columbus Metropolitan Club, Jane Scott, and Chair Mo Wright, and other members of the leadership of the Columbus Metropolitan Club to please come forward to the podium as I introduce Resolution 209X-2016 to recognize and celebrate the 40th anniversary of the Columbus Metropolitan Club. The Columbus Metropolitan Club was founded in 1976 by 13 progressive women in order to gain access to community leaders and to provide insight on current issues in a time where women were often left out of those important conversations. Today, it provides a diverse space for constructive dialogue by recruiting members from a wide range of backgrounds to serve as a source for inclusive community conversation and as an accessible resource for engaging in politics, economics, and social affairs. The Columbus Metropolitan Club plans up to 70 public forums for the community every year with up to 200 panelists, speakers, debaters, and moderators who discuss and analyze a wide variety of important topics such as community development, environmental concerns, legal matters, again, politics, and other issues that are significant for the citizens of Columbus. So it's with great pleasure that I present this resolution to the leadership of the Columbus Metropolitan Club in order to celebrate your 40th year in the city. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And Chair Wright. The podium is all yours.
Thank you, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, and Councilmember Stenziano. I'm Mo Wright, Chair of the CMC Board of Trustees, and we're excited to be here representing and celebrating 40 years of the community's conversation. As all of you are well aware, for 40 years, this organization has stood at the forefront of diversity and discussion and debate in our community. Many of you have graced our stage with your presence over the years, and we thank you for continuing to make us the forum where the community can discuss relevant issues to our community. We're an organization about diversity. I don't take lightly that 40 years ago, the reason why our founders started the CMC was because they couldn't get into clubs of the day. And so 40 years later, to be an African-American male standing here as chair means that's the progress of CMC, but that's also the progress of our city. So we're excited to be here, joined by my members of the board and past board members, and we're going to continue to elevate those conversations in this community. As long as you keep giving us something to talk about, you'll have a place to come talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I always work to make sure there's something to talk about. Next, I would like to invite Pastor Skip Jackson and members of his congregation from the Indianola Presbyterian Church to please come forward to the podium as I introduce Resolution 212X-2016 to recognize and celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Indianola Presbyterian Church at Waldau Avenue. The Indianola Presbyterian Church at the intersection of Iuka, Waldau, and 18th Avenues was established in 1916 by the faithful Indianola Presbyterian Congregation and has continued to serve individuals and families in and around Columbus for the past 100 years. On September 17th, 1916, the Indianola Presbyterian Church congregation marched to the first service in its new building in a procession headed by a fife and drum corps and has since experienced growth of parishioners and services provided due to the marvelous church structure and shelter. The Indianola Presbyterian Church remains a gathering place for church members, staff, and pastors, and continues to provide a safe haven for those seeking spiritual guidance and location to meet and bond with community members. Upon this anniversary, this council commends the Indianola Presbyterian Church for their continued success and lasting impact and contributions made to our community. So I'm very happy to present this resolution. And are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I will move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Pastor Jackson. The podium is all yours.
On behalf of Indianola Presbyterian Church and the members present, especially, I'd like to thank Councilmember Stenziano and the council for this resolution. It affirms for us our connection with the City of Columbus, and in particular, our connection we recognize and are pleased with our connection with the Ohio State University neighborhood. Indianola, when it was founded, was, one of the driving forces in that was William Oxley Thompson, who did a great deal to help found the congregation and to provide the funds for building that first big building we're in now. We will celebrate the 100th anniversary and recognize this resolution from the City Council, remembering, as we look through our own records, that the City of Columbus has recognized us in the past. I think James Rhodes was the master of ceremonies at our 50th anniversary, and we thank you for this recognition at this time.
to recognize and celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Franklinson Arts District Urban Scrawl. Unfortunately, we had a last-minute cancellation, but would like to highlight this fantastic event and this organization because Urban Scrawl truly has meant a lot to the Franklinson area in the last decade. Urban Scrawl was founded in 2007 by the Franklinson Arts District in response to the growing desire to celebrate local artists and their positive impact on the neighborhood of Franklinson. Taking place at 400 West Rich Street, it offers a two-day festival setting featuring the live creation of murals and the opportunity for community members and visitors to experience local art and interact with neighbors and entertainers. Funds generated at the event have been directed to support individual artists, artistic collaborations, and community-based organizations investing in the fundamental value of arts and culture in Franklinson. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, then I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And those are all the resolutions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. I have one resolution. I'm going to ask Annie Womack to please walk towards the podium, please. And it's Resolution 0214X-2016. It is to recognize September as Sickle Cell Month in the City of Columbus and to support the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association in their efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. Whereas, sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects nearly 100,000 people in the United States. Sickle cell disease causes red blood cells to form into a crescent shape, like a sickle, and sickle cells live only 10 to 20 days instead of the normal 120 days of regular blood cells. And the damaged sickle cells can cause serious health problems, including restricted blood flow, tissue, and organ damage, prolonged episodes of intense physical pain, stroke, blindness, other vision problems, and increased susceptibility to infection. Whereas, a sickle cell disease is most common in people from the continent of Africa or African-Americans, but can also be found in other ethnic and racial groups, including people from South and Central America, the Caribbean, the Mediterranean, and India. And whereas, one out of every 500 African-American children is born with a sickle cell anemia. And whereas, the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association was incorporated in 1977 and was originally established for the purpose of providing a payment mechanism for medically intelligent adults with sickle cell. And whereas, the mission of the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association is to provide education, advocacy, and statewide support to individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. This is achieved by focusing on education, testing, counseling, providing referral support in various advocacy initiatives. And whereas, sickle cell disease has been recognized as a global public health priority with international resolutions being passed by the African Union and UNESCO in 2005, the World Health Organization 2006, and the United States in 2008. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize September as Sickle Cell Month in the City of Columbus, and be it further resolved that this council supports the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association in their efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Ms. Womack, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein, councilmembers, and Councilwoman Tyson. It is so apropos that we have a bill that's adopted by someone who themselves is an advocate, so she has said everything that I need to say, but I would like to commend Councilwoman Tyson on her efforts to bring this to the forefront. When you have a child that has sickle cell disease, you're no longer on the outside looking in, but you're on the inside looking out. So she knows firsthand what it's like for all of our patients across the state of Ohio, not just in Central Ohio, but every year, almost 500 babies are born with sickle cell disease. There are countless of people walking around the City of Columbus that don't even know that they carry the trait. And so now, we have different antigens and different hemoglobinopathies, which is a big word for just blood disorders, that I get to say all the time. So we just thank you very much for your continued support in bringing this to the forefront, and we just would like to just, you know, say a prayer for all of our patients. I was going to be joined here by our President of the Columbus Chapter, but she herself is in crises, so she's in the hospital now, in emergency level-three crisis, so you know what that's like, Councilwoman Tyson. So I'm going to leave here and go visit with her, and I'm going to show her the resolution, and I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, but before you walk away and I hand you the resolution, can you mention the event on Saturday?
Oh, on Saturday? Thank you very much. On Saturday is our annual run, jog, walk, so you can come out, run, jog, walk, flip, skip, whatever you want to do, for sickle cell disease, and this is our annual awareness campaign. We actually have these walks all over the state of Ohio, so this is actually the fifth walk that I've been at since September. So we travel the state. We are the state agency, so we have chapters all over the state of Ohio. We are mandated to do 88 counties, and out of our 88 counties, we have 20 walks in the month of September. So I'll be very busy, and I think you appreciate our walk is at Wolf Park. If anyone would like to come over, registration's at 8:30. We leave at 9:00, and we're back by 11:30, and we're out of the park by noon. I run a tight ship because we have several events that day, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Don't walk away. Thank you. I have an announcement. In partnership with Commissioner John O'Grady, I sponsored the Local Food Action Plan in the fall of 2014. And over the last 18 months, the Columbus Public Health Local Matters and a team from the county commissioner's office have worked diligently to study food deserts, waste patterns, and how to improve access to healthy local food. We are now asking for feedback from our community members, and there are a number of ways you can continue to do so. One, by going to the Columbus website, www.columbus.gov, and look for the Local Food Action Plan and provide input in that way. But there are also a number of meetings that are still being held in our community. September 14th at 2:00 at the Near East Health Advisory Committee at the Neighborhood House on Atchison Avenue, Atchison Street. September 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the South Side Advisory Committee for the Church for All People at 946 Parsons Avenue. Next Monday, the 19th, at Doctors Hospital Heritage Center at 5100 West Broad Street at 6:00 p.m. On the 20th of September at 4:30 at the Franklin County Local Food Action at Morpsey at 111 Liberty Street. On September 20th at 5:45, the Central Health Advisory Committee Food Meeting at St. Stevens at 1500 East 17th Avenue. And then lastly, September 22nd at 4:30 at Dodge Recreation Center at 667 Sullivan Avenue. It's important that we get input from every individual in the community who wants to provide input because this plan is for all the residents of our community. And with that, I would say thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. I do have one resolution. It's 213X-2016 to honor and recognize Hope Over Heroin for their efforts towards saving lives and stopping the cycle of addiction in the City of Columbus. I'd like to welcome up our friends from Hope Over Heroin. Please come to the podium. While they're coming up, can I have a motion to adopt this resolution? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution adopted. Hope Over Heroin is a collaborative effort of churches and ministries in Ohio to reach those suffering from drug-related issues. The job is to create a network of resources that offer drug-related programs, asking that treatment centers celebrate recovery groups, churches, food shelters, and other resource partners with them in providing hope. It's a Cincinnati-based movement that's gone mobile and has spread to the City of Columbus, and they recently had a two-day festival at Dodge Park in August with more than 30 churches, three dozen organizations, elected officials, and 70 people who began their journey for detoxification. I know this is something that Mayor Ginther and this council has taken very seriously with our friends in public safety in expanding Narcan resources for our first responders, including police in addition to fire, as well as money that this council has represented to various nonprofits to build some outpatient treatment facilities in Central Ohio. And then, recent news with actually a piece of legislation on first reading, our friends at Ohio Health in the back and expanding the work that they're doing to treat addiction. So this is something that we understand, and we partner together and appreciate the work that you're doing, and wanted to honor the boots on the ground and the soldiers that are in this fight to curb drug addiction. So the floor is yours to please introduce yourselves. I'll let anyone that wants to step up to the mic take the lead, but please welcome to council and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. First and foremost, we want to thank the Columbus City Council for recognizing us. Hope Over Heroin truly is what it says it is, and that is a collaboration. The platform is designed to give faith-based community the ability to come together under one tent and be able to spread love and commitment to the community that the faith-based organization is here to assist them. Hope Over Heroin was an extremely successful event. It could not have been done without the hundreds of volunteers that assisted. That's really where the true thank you goes, is countless number of people that are not present that participated in the event. There was also a march down Sullivan Avenue. There was a mile-long walk of remembrance for those that were lost to opiate addiction. That was a mile-long walk that took place and was very effective, I think, in allowing the community to recognize that the faith-based organization does care about their needs and desires, and we're just grateful. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to step up and speak? All right, come on up. If you don't mind, introduce everyone if you can.
detoxification. I know this is something that Mayor Ginther and this council has taken very seriously with our friends in public safety in expanding Narcan resources for our first responders, including police in addition to fire, as well as money that this council has represented to various nonprofits to build some outpatient treatment facilities in central Ohio. And then recent news with actually a piece of legislation on first reading, our friends at Ohio Health in the back and expanding the work that they're doing to treat addiction. So this is something that we understand, and we partner together and appreciate the work that you're doing, and wanted to honor the boots on the ground and the soldiers that are in this fight to curb drug addiction. So the floor is yours to please introduce yourselves. I'll let anyone that wants to step up to the mic take the lead, but please welcome to council and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. First and foremost, we want to thank the Columbus City Council for recognizing us. Hope Over Heroin truly is what it says it is, and that is a collaboration. The platform is designed to give faith-based community the ability to come together under one tent and be able to spread love and commitment to the community that the faith-based organization is here to assist them. Hope Over Heroin was an extremely successful event. It could not have been done without the hundreds of volunteers that assisted. That's really where the true thank you goes, is countless number of people that are not present that participated in the event. There was also a march down Sullivan Avenue. There was a mile-long walk of remembrance for those that were lost to opiate addiction. That was a mile-long walk that took place and was very effective, I think, in allowing the community to recognize that the faith-based organization does care about their needs and desires, and we're just grateful. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to step up and speak?
Also.
All right, come on up. If you might introduce everyone if you can.
This is Pastor Jeff Leslie, Pastor Shannon Hay, Pastor Missy Louie, and Melissa Lammerow. And I'm Joey Moes. For me, coming from addiction, it was so, I don't know, there's no secret of the Hope Over Heroin. The hope is Jesus Christ. And that's when we went to another event in another city, I saw that and I said, we've got to bring that to Columbus. So me and Pastor Jeff and Shannon met at a Panera back in January, and we went out and just started recruiting different churches to tackle this epidemic, to bring the faith-based, to bring Jesus Christ right to where the problem is. See, I feel like sometimes I'm the worst sinner in the world, and if Jesus can transfer my life into where I go into public schools, share my scars, share my story with children so they don't go down the road that I went down, then He can do it for anybody. And it was so beautiful to see 30 different churches coming together with hundreds of volunteers to bring that to the broken, and for them to start their road to recovery. It was just, it was, there's no other word to describe it than beautiful. And for the council members and everyone to be on board now, it's like, finally, you know, it's, but I will say, if we don't, if we don't bring Jesus to this, to the broken, then it's going to be another drug. It's going to be something else. So that was the beauty about Hope Over Heroin, was fix the spiritual problem that there was. That's what I got.
Thank you for sharing your story. This is certainly a community problem, and it's going to take a community response with faith and business and not-for-profit and government and healthcare systems for all of us to come together to tackle it, to make our community safer, to make our community healthy, to bring families back together, to reunite children with their moms and their dads. And this has become a problem that sees no race, it sees no class, it sees no sexual orientation or gender. Could be the person you work with, you go to school with, you worship with. But together, I feel confident that we can make a difference to improve Franklin County. Sure, President Protim Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. I just have a question. So if anyone in our viewing and listening audience, listen to two of you speaking, and they want to know, how do I get help, or how do I get in contact with you? What's the answer to that question?
We have a website that is www.hopeoverheroincolumbus.com. That is the daughter organization of www.hopeoverheroin.com. We also have a Facebook page that is Hope Over Heroin Columbus, as well as Hope Over Heroin.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We do have one presentation this evening that we have started since this council convened, regular presentations and updates from various area commissions. And tonight's the Greater Hilltop, and it's President of the Commission Jay McAllister. Welcome down to council. Thanks for joining us this evening, and the floor is yours to give us some updates about the Hilltop.
I will simply go ahead and read my prepared statement, otherwise I will get flustered and forget something. Ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I want to introduce myself. My name is Jay McAllister. I am the chairman of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. As I understand it, the Greater Hilltop Area Commission's seat here has sat in empty for many years. While I can't promise to be here every week, I can promise that I intend to change that. I have worked with several of you in the past, and I'm looking forward to working closely with all of you in the future. The entire commission is eager to work with council, police, code enforcement, city attorney's office, and any other agencies that will help us to better the Hilltop. The Hilltop was once the premier area of the city. With over 70,000 people, if we were a city unto ourselves, we would be the ninth-largest city in the state. It is well-known among Hilltop leaders that a letter can be sent from anywhere in the United States with nothing more than a name and the address of Hilltop, USA, and it will find its way to the rightful recipient. The Hilltop is made up of good people, hard-working, middle-class families. All of these people, and especially the Greater Hilltop Area Commission, are ready to work and make the Hilltop stronger than it ever has been. West Broad Street is the gateway to the city from the west. We want to turn West Broad Street corridor into a showplace that would make the city proud again. With a $400 million casino, we have what is perhaps the premier destination, not only of the city, but the entire state. However, the land directly north and south of the casino is vacant and overgrown with weeds. The Westland Mall area, which is nothing but an eyesore, sits directly across the street to the west. We want to annex the old mall into the city and encourage and even force redevelopment there. We want to turn these areas around the casino into a family destination where people will not only come to the Hollywood Casino, but stay for family attractions with hotels, restaurants, theaters, maybe even something such as a water park where families would want to come and spend time. While the Hollywood Casino has the best upscale restaurant in the city with the Final Cut Steakhouse, we have realistic goals to bring in restaurants along Broad Street such as Outback, O'Charley's, and Appleby's that would be sustainable for the income of the Hilltop and yet complementary to the casino. There is only one major grocery store for the entire Hilltop. We have lost businesses such as Meyer, Kohl's, and Target. Because of this, many residents leave the Hilltop to do even basic shopping. We don't need another dollar store, but we do want to see Great Western Shopping Center and storefronts all along Broad Street revitalized, bringing back these businesses and encouraging new businesses such as Old Navy, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and World Market. We want the infrastructure and the streetscaping in the area to be something to be proud of. We want to develop the area of Broad Street east of Hague into an area similar to the Short North with fashionable shops, small trendy restaurants, coffee shops, and delis. We want to see the end of the days when we were willing to settle for a new laundromat just because it meant one less vacant building. However, we need the help with all of these things. We need tax incentives to bring in the businesses, and we need the city to provide new streetscaping with new sidewalks, planters, and landscaping, new streetlights and benches, making this not only a pleasant area to drive through, but a pleasant and safe area to walk and bike. This could be accomplished if the city were to spend even a fraction of the money that was just spent on our new beautiful riverfront. We can't forget the neighborhoods. We need to offer tax incentives for first-time homebuyers and owner-occupied rehabs and stop the influx of properties owned by LLCs where you can't even find the owner when there's a problem. We need higher-end departments that will bring in young professionals and move away from landlords that will rent to anyone that can come up with the first month's rent without even doing a background check. With West High School being the oldest unrenovated school in the city, we need help for our schools so that families will want to move into the Hilltop. We need help combating crime, bringing in more police officers and targeting high-crime areas. The Columbus Police have done three sting operation for prostitution this summer with over 60 arrests of prostitutes and Johns each time. That's a good start, but we need to redouble our efforts. Nearly all prostitution and petty crime are fueled by drugs. We need to run these criminals out of the Hilltop and bring in social programs such as Mount Carmel's Eden Program to help those that want help. We know it took decades for the Hilltop to come to this point, and we understand that it will take time to come back. We are eager to get started. We're asking the help of each and every one of you to accomplish these goals. We're looking for guidance and ideas and to help bring back investors. If the Hilltop fails, the entire city will fail. I am more than willing to answer any questions now or to meet with any of you at any time in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chair McAllister. Any questions or comments for the chair of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission? Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, President Klein. Just wanted to congratulate you as the new chair of the commission, and I think we all look forward to working together with you and the other members of the area commission. But congratulations on the recent new chairmanship.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding, Chairman, that some meetings are being set up with you in the Department of Development to tackle some of the issues that you raised here, specifically about redevelopment in and around the casino along Broad Street and Sullivan Avenue. So I appreciate your diligence and your willingness to serve and care about not only the Hilltop, but the greater good of the city of Columbus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments by elected officials, auditor Dorian, city attorney Pfeiffer, the treasurer's office, Judge Barrows? Any other elected officials here, comments from my colleagues that maybe we missed? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance 1942-2016, Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 2076-2016, Economic Development Committee ordinance is 2189-2200-2237-2016, Administration Committee ordinance is 1632 and 2070-2016, Public Service and Transportation Committee resolutions 202X-2016, ordinance is 2093 and 2199-2016, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1943, 1952, 1955, 1958, 2002, 2005, 2006, 2027, 2029, 2044, 2046, 2050, 2058, 2062, 2063, 2066, 2117, 2119-2016, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 2133-2016.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the city clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 0194X, 0210X, 0215X, 0198X, 0199X, 201X, 205X, 206X, 207X-2016. Finance Committee ordinance is 1904, 1941, 1956, 1957, 1978, 1992, 2065, 2078, 2086, 2087, 2088-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 2180-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance 1842-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee resolution 196X-2016, ordinance is 1485, 1859, 1914, 2053, 2121, 2169, 2170, and 2171-2016. Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance 1519 and 1985-2016. Recreation Parks Committee ordinance is 1892, 1894, 1895, and 2138-2016. Housing Committee ordinance is 1946, 20051, 2054, 2055, 2056, 2057, 2059, 2060, 2061, 2064, 2080, 2101, 2109, 2149, 2206, and 2209-2016. Technology Committee ordinance is 1995 and 1996-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance 2091-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance is 2132 and 2135-2016. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0142, 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, 150, 151, 152, and 153-2016.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. We do have one speaker on the consent action portion of the agenda. That's Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, speaking indeterminative of whether he's speaking for or against, but it appears to be for consent action resolution 2055-2016.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of solely vacant property in the North London I would like to speak to about 1635 Genesee Avenue. I know the property had sit vacant for multiple long time before it came to the land bank. My problem here, you know, I just don't want to see another rental property in London. And because of this, we have property that's been rented out and people move out of it, you know? So again, I just want to bring you to one property here. 1525 Genesee Avenue was occupied, but I'm just really nervous about all these land bank properties that's been sold to the land bank for rental property in use. You know, if it's going to come a rental property on 1635 Genesee Avenue, I would like to see that person, whoever has this house, what it's going to be used for, and having that tenant to be in there more than five to 10 years. We have more than a lot of rental property all through the area of London and South London. People live in these properties for one to two years. But the problem that we have is a lot of high weeds and stuff that people don't take care of. So again, I'm for it, but I'd rather for a long tenant to be in that property because that's catty corner from my house, even though this property has stolen siding on the back of it time after time again, and I have watched this property has sit like this for decades. So again, I would just like to have more clarification what this property is going to be used for, and yes, I am for this, only for one particular reason, to have a long tenant in this property. Thank you for your time.
Director Shoney, if you could follow up with Mr. Wilkins on the disposition of that property? Any questions or comments about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I have a second for, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Harden? Page? Stenziano? Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 2135-2016, on which I am abstaining.
President Klein?
Yes, with the exception of 2138-2016, on which I'm abstaining, the consent carries with the notable exceptions. So we'll now go to the reading of second day, I'm sorry, second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, chaired by President Protim Tyson. President Protim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have ordinance number, I was really, for a moment, I just had a flashback to a different president. So I had to make sure I said the right name. So, okay. Ordinance number 2196-2016 is to authorize the director of finance and management to execute those documents necessary to convey fee simple title to the city, to that city surplus and real property identified at 1716 Parsons Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43211, to Jay Schleppowitz and to declare an emergency. This property had been marketed to the public for several years and has been shown to a number of interested parties. And so I'm very excited that this was one of our, was Fire Station Number 14. And now we have entered into a formal contract for the sale of this property. And the initial plan for the property is for the owner to move his business from the Short North to occupy the second-floor building. The proceeds of the $155,000 from the sale of this property will be deposited into the General Permanent Improvement Fund. So I'm very excited because, I think the zip code is wrong, though. 43211, it happens to be, I think, the London area, as opposed to, this is on South Parsons. So I do believe the zip code, as I read it, is probably not the right zip code. And I don't know if we need to amend it to the right zip code or leave it as is and make the change.
Director Lombardi, do you have any information that you can provide of whether this zip code is correct?
No, I don't, but we can correct it if...
No, I don't, but we can correct it if, if we need to, and we can bring this ordinance back to council as amended.
City Attorney?
Mr. President, I have a question, I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, City Attorney. Our South Side representative here, Councilmember Harden, do you have a motion to amend the legislation to the appropriate zip code?
Yes, can we, oh yes, yes, we're making a motion. Now is a lot of pressure, I hope it for sure it's right, but yes.
That's fine, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and make them, the motion's been made, is there a second? Okay, so the motion on the table is to amend this to 43207. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Brown? I'm sorry. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Okay, the legislation is amended to the zip code that we all believe is the correct zip code.
Thank, yes, thank you. And I will, before I move for passage, I want to make one more comment. I do want to thank Ann Kelly from the Real Estate Division for her hard work and finding, and finding a buyer for this property and sell, again, I want to recognize Ann. And so with that, I would move for passage.
Clerk call the roll on the amended legislation.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you. I now like to move to Health and Human Services.
Please.
Yes, I have ordinance number 2116-2016 is to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into agreements with various nonprofit organizations in order to assist in their repair of emergency shelters for the homeless, for homeless individuals and families, and to authorize the expenditure of $350,000 from the, from the fiscal year 2016 Housing Preservation Fund and to declare an emergency. The Community Shelter Board's network will provide life-saving emergency shelter for 10,000 people this year. Emergency shelters help keep people safe until they can land back on their feet. The Community Shelter Board oversaw a competitive application process on behalf of the city of Columbus for these funds and to identify the most pressing needs within the homeless system. The organization, five different shelters will get funds and will make the much-needed repairs and improvements. Those organizations are Mary Haven Engagement Center, and their roof will be replaced, the YMCA's Van Buren Shelter, and we will be having their restrooms will be made handicap accessible, flooring will be replaced at the Faith Mission on 8th Avenue, and a roof will be replaced at Southeast Friends of the Homeless Men's Shelter. And lastly, we'll have the bathtubs will be renovated at the YWCA Family Center. And these are much-needed improvements, and again, I want to thank the Community Shelter Board for overseeing this process. So I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Tyson. The next committee is the Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development, we have ordinance 2205-2016 to amend ordinance 3012-2015 by adding an exhibit B1 broadening the scope of eligible public improvements and to declare an emergency. Ordinance 3012-2015 passed last year, December 7, 2015, to establish the Dublin-Gramville-North Tiff area, and this amends it to expand the range of public improvements eligible for reimbursement such as parking. Are there any questions for my colleagues? All right, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next in Economic Development Committee, we have ordinance 2234-2016 to set forth a statement of municipal services and zoning conditions to be provided to the area contained in a proposed annexation, AN16-007, of one point five-five or more acres in Perry Township to the city of Columbus as required by the Ohio Revised Code and to declare an emergency. Any questions for my colleagues? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have in Economic Development, but I do have one in Administration. In Administration Committee, we have ordinance 2193-2016 to accept memorandum of understanding number 2016-03 executed between representatives of the city of Columbus and Communication Workers of America, CWA Local 4502, which amends the collective bargaining contract of April 24, 2014 through April 23, 2017, and to declare an emergency. This amendment is simply to add the classification, to add a classification and assign a pay grade. Any questions for my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Recreation and Parks chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have a few ordinances, and I would just like to ask all my colleagues to note that we are asking the director of Recreation and Parks to continue to work with a lot of our community partners to provide top-quality recreational arts and other amenities to our residents. So the first ordinance is 1860-2016 to authorize the director of Recreation and Parks to make payment to the Columbus Museum of Art as part of existing grant agreement to authorize the expenditure of $1,600,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This project ensures that the Columbus Museum of Art, the oldest museum in the state, remains a sustainable, competitive, and relevant community asset for future generations. This funding will be used to, for site work to the Broad Street lawn. The lawn is a formal historic entry and face of the museum complex. This area will undergo renovation of the Broad Street steps to modernize and provide safe access to the museum. The project will also include the redesign of the plantings and green space of the area on Broad Street, on the Broad Street side of the facility between Washington and 9th. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
1870-2016 to authorize and direct the director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement pursuant to section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for the Franklin County Historical Society Doing Business as Cosi for the renovation of the Cosi facility and surrounding grounds, to authorize the expenditure of $2,100,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Again, the city has determined that it is in the best interest to enter into an agreement with the Franklin County Historical Society Doing Business as Cosi for the purposes of renovating and improving the building and surrounding grounds. The funding and improvements will include replacement of the roof, cooling tower renovations, building signage upgrades, exterior shell preservation, safety and security system upgrades, carpet replacements, flooring replacements, and educational directional footpath signage on the surrounding greenways areas. There are any additional comments from the director? If there are no further questions or comments, I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
1887-2016 to authorize and direct the director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Franklin Park Conservatory for the implementation of the Franklin Park Master Plan in the amount of $1,500,000, to authorize the expenditure of $1,500,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Franklin Park Conservatory and Botanical Gardens has developed its Master Plan 2.0 in partnership with Columbus Recreation and Parks. This funding will support design and construction of a new two-acre children's garden and an eight-acre expanded visitor experience scheduled to open in May 2018. Public support from the city, county, and state are being matched two to one by the private sector. To date, the conservatory has raised $12,836,800 or about 58% of its $22 million goal. These improvements will continue to benefit the community by enhancing the visitor experience, create a more attractive destination for Central High residents and beyond. There are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Ordinance 1925-2016 to authorize the director of the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into contract with E.L. Robinson Engineering for design safety improvements to the Olin-Tangie Trail Henderson Road ramp, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $58,565.17 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond 7702 and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask the director to speak briefly to why we are waiving the competitive provisions, of competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code.
Chair Page, President Klein, members of council, thank you. We're working on this project with E.L. Robinson. We, as we were working with them and did the quote process, we had to add an additional piece in that took it over the 50,000. Robinson has been working on the project since the start, and we're interested in getting this project moved forward in terms of a timeline to take advantage of the construction season, as this is a dangerous situation, we want to try to alleviate the, the tight radius turn of this particular section of trail.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments for the director? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And the final ordinance in Recreation and Parks, 1931-2016, to authorize the director of the Recreation and Parks Department to execute and acknowledge all documents as approved by the city attorney necessary to grant Nationwide Children's Hospital an Ohio nonprofit corporation and a pertinent non-exclusive easement below the surface of Livingston Park for future underground parking facilities and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask the director to speak briefly about this project.
Chair Page, President Klein, members of council, thank you. We're very excited to be working with Children's Hospital on this project. It's a unique partnership with Livingston Park. It helps empower the hospital to continue planning their long-term plans for expansion and growth in our South Side corridor, so we're very happy to support that, but yet protects the long-term permanent access to Livingston Park. So this project is a part of the master plan, we don't have a timeline, it's not going to be in the near future of the actual construction, but has been discussed since 2009. There's a master plan for Livingston Park that was created in conjunction with the community, that there's a third phase that will be built out by childrens once they do implement this, as well as Children's is committed to, upon the signing of this agreement, to contribute $250,000 towards long-term capital commitments for the park. So not only does it improve the park for the long-term for the residents, but it also puts a set of funds aside to help maintain the capital side of the park for the long term.
Thank you, Director. And I would just have one brief question. At Children's Hospital, my understanding, they've been in communication with the, the commission out there in the neighborhood?
Yeah, this has been a long process for them. Their representatives have been out in the community, speaking to the community. They were also involved in the planning phase of the Livingston Park Master Plan, so they've been in connection and making sure that the public's aware of this. And there's going to be more and more communication on this as well, because as you know, that we can't get to everybody with every piece of information, so we're going to continue to try to get the questions answered and make sure the public's aware of what's going on.
Great, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? I would like to move for passage of 1931-2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, that's all I have this evening, President Klein.
Our final committee is Judiciary and Court Administration chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight I bring ordinance 2266-2016 to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the claims of Ava Ellis, Andrea Ellis, and Brad Ellis to appropriate funds in the Special Income Tax Fund to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $780,000 in settlement of these claims and to declare an emergency. On June 19, 2015, Ava Ellis was injured in an accidental police-involved shooting. She sustained serious physical injuries that were as a result of the shooting, and seeing the city attorney, Pfeiffer here, defer to any additional comments or background he'd like to provide regarding this ordinance.
Chair Stenziano, President Klein, members of council, on, on June 19, 2015, about 3:00 in the afternoon, Columbus Police Officer John Thompson had just finished taking an incident report from a household in Whitehall. There had been an accident in Columbus and he had to go to Whitehall to take the incident report. As he was leaving the house, a woman just up the street started hollering at him, said, "My sister's hurt, she's bleeding, we need a medic." So he followed her to the house where this occurred, and as the door was open, there was a couple of children there, one child ran out behind him in the, in the back. And as he went into the house, a dog approached him and he kicked the dog, the dog went away. But then another dog came, and at this point, the officer felt threatened by this dog, and he took out his revolver and shot at the dog, but instead of hitting the dog, he hit four-year-old Ava Ellis in the upper right thigh, causing serious injuries, considered a loss of blood, incurring at this point medical expenses in excess of $250,000, and spent nine days in the hospital. She will suffer permanent scarring, and she'll probably have some future, future needs for operation. We got a demand letter from some attorneys over in Dayton representing the family, they were demanding $1,600,000. So we called them and we talked to them, we looked at the facts of the case and had some serious concerns about it and believed that if it went further, we probably couldn't survive summary judgment, and we didn't really want to take this to a jury trial. So with the negotiations, we, they settled on a figure of $780,000. It releases us of all any other claims against those three folks that were involved. It was an unfortunate incident. The officer did receive some discipline, which he is now contesting, and we would ask the council to approve this ordinance so that we can compensate this injured young person and move forward. Any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, City Attorney. And I assume no questions for the City Attorney means no questions for me, so with that, I would move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That is all we have in committee tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stenziano. We do have two non-agenda speakers. We have zoning in about 20 minutes. We're going to go ahead, if I can get a motion to adjourn, we'll do that, take our non-agenda speakers, and then reconvene for zoning at 6:30. Can I have that motion? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. Regular meeting number 45 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
First readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to zoning. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. I do not believe that we have any speaker slips this evening, so I will go to our first zoning ordinance, 2130-2016, to rezone 5995 North Hamilton Road, 43081, being 8.43 acres located at the southwest corner of North Hamilton Road and State Route 161, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District and LC4 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Hamilton Crossing LLC in care of Charles Frost Agent. The proposed use is a commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northland Community Council recommended approval. There are no questions or comments, I would first like to move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
2939-2016 to rezone 4664 Salmo Road, 43220, being 3.04 acres located on the east side of Salmo Road, 307 feet south of Bethel Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Aldi Inc., Springfield Division, care of Kaling Acres Agent. The proposed use is a parking lot expansion. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northwest Civic Association recommended approval. There are no questions or comments, I would first like to move to waive second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And our final ordinance in zoning this evening, 0728-2016, to rezone 986 Hilliard Rome Road East, 43206, being 11.75 acres located at the southeast corner of Hilliard Rome Road East and Fisher Road, from R Rural District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Preferred Real Estate Investments, II LLC, care of Jill Tangeman Attorney. The proposed use is a commercial or industrial development. The city department's recommendation is disapproval, and there is no area commission in this particular area. I would first like to move to take it from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I would now like to move to table it indefinitely.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. We have nothing further in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.